will be given by Pastor Donnie Filippo, a pastor of the Gospel Center Church. If everyone would please silence your cell phones and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today in the name of Jesus. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you for grace. Thank you for this wonderful, beautiful town that we have here in Beaumont. We just thank you for our city and the blessings that you put upon us. Thank you for the leaders that lead and we pray for unity and love and just working together to, for our citizens to come together and to accomplish the goals that you have set for us. Father, we ask that you just lead us and guide us in truth and revelation. We pray for our nation today as we make our decision for our next leader. We pray for unity among all. We pray for the love and the peace of God to sustain us and keep us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Protim Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
And Councilmember Samuel.
Here.
All right, today we have two proclamations and two presentations. And first, we're going to have a proclamation recognizing November 8th through the 10th, 2024 as MDA Fill the Boot Days. Accepting will be Mr. Kenny Sandersen and members of the Beaumont Firefighters Local 399. If y'all would come up first and we'll, you can all come up and then we'll, we'll hand this out and get a photograph.
I want more.
Let's wait for the old guy.
Okay, everybody on three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Got it.
My name is Kenny Sanderson. I represent IFF Local 399, Beaumont Professional Firefighters. It's that time of year again where firefighters across the United States join forces to support Muscular Discreet Association, MDA. Through our annual Fill the Boot campaign nearly for 30 years, Beaumont Fire and Rescue and the members of Local 399 have proudly partnered with MDA, raising thousands of dollars to help fund research, provide critical resources, and give children the opportunity to attend MDA summer camps at no cost to their families. Many of us had the privilege of meeting local families affected by muscular dystrophy, who have shared their stories in hope and gratitude. Thanks for the efforts of Local 399 and the city of Beaumont. We have made a real difference in their lives. Fill the Boot Campaign for MDA is not just a fire service tradition, it's a promise to those in need for a cure and we can stand with them until one is found. There are over 40 different types of neuromuscular diseases, including ALS, Lou Gehrig's Disease. For many of the families, Fill the Boot has been a beacon of hope as a fine and raised contributions and advancements in science, technologies, and research necessary to find a cure. We look forward to the day when there's no longer a need to fill the boot because that means that a cure has been found. Until that day, we're grateful for the City Council for allowing us to continue serving our community by issuing a proclamation for IFF Local 399 to fill the boot from November 8th through November 10th. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing November 11th, 2024 as Veterans Day. Accepting will be Mrs. Cheryl Williams, retired U.S. Army Sergeant and Second District Commander, Department of Texas, and any of, anybody else that is with you, they are all welcome.
You still mind me?
All right. Thank you. Thank you guys for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for serving.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
Good to see you.
Are you doing? Thank you for serving. Anybody, thank you for serving.
Never have.
Thank you for serving. Thanks for serving.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
We appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
He can take you.
No, I don't want.
You can come up here if you want to take.
You can come up to take the picture as well. And I have two cameras here as well. One, two, three. One, two, three. Right there.
Good afternoon, Mayor West. City Manager Williams, Councilman Durio, Councilman Getz, Councilman Turner, Councilman Phil Shaw, Councilman, I know your name. I know your other name, too. Councilman, Jesus, Samuel. Councilman Neils and Attorney Reed. My name is Cheryl Williams and I represent the Department of Texas, the American Legion Second District, which I have the pleasure of being the district commander. As a matter of fact, we are the top command, uh, top district in the entire nation. We won the race to the top on last year, which meant that we beat out over a thousand districts to be the top district representing Beaumont, Texas. Are there other veterans in the house? Are there any other veterans here? Would you please stand if you're a veteran? Thank you, council. Thank you for remembering the sacrifices of me and my comrades to uphold the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy. We stand before you today as proud soldiers, sailors, airmen, corpsmen, marines, and coasties who have pledged our lives to service, service to God, to our country, to our community, and to our family. We receive this proclamation from our city that esteems the service and sacrifice of these fine men and women. We want to leave you with a poem that reminds us about the freedoms we enjoy entitled, "It Is the Veteran." It is the veteran, not the preacher, who has given us freedom of religion. It is the veteran, not the reporter, Tracy, who has given us the freedom of the press. It is the veteran, and not the poet, who has given us freedom of speech. It is the veteran, not the campus organizer, who has given us freedom to assemble. It is the veteran, not the lawyer, who has given us the right to a fair trial. It is the veteran, not the politician, who has given us the right to vote. It is the veteran who salutes the flag, who serves under the flag, who gave his or her oath to support and defend the Constitution of our nation against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and whose coffin is oftentimes draped by the flag. It is the veteran with faith in God and country who has given us all of our freedoms. Again, thank you, Mayor West, and all of the council members for this esteemed proclamation. We're looking forward to the day when we will take the, take the love that you all are showing us here in the chamber and take it out to the street where we'll have a Veterans Day parade. And we're also looking for the time that you'll decide to have a veteran advisory council so our input will be made manifest here in the city of Beaumont. On my count, comrades, attention. One, two. You may be seated.
And that is the end of our proclamation. So if you're here just for a proclamation, feel free to leave at this time and, and after Next, we will have the city of Beaumont communication update.
Good afternoon. In your November 5th announcements, today is Presidential Election Day. The polls are open until 7:00 tonight. For a full listing of the polling places in your county, for Jefferson County, go to Speaking of voting, we'd like to announce our winners for the city of Beaumont's Great Pumpkin Contest. Employees and citizens voted in person and on Facebook. First place with 408 votes goes to Pac-Man's Pumpkin Patch by our Water Quality Department. Second place was Chasing Sunsets in a Hot Air Balloon by the Water Utilities Department. And third place, Pumpkin Pillar by the WIC Department. And most comments and honorable mention going to Sergeant Jacko Lautner, Police Administration. Thanks for all who participated and voted to make this a fun event. Get ready to fill your plates all this week during Restaurant, Restaurant Week, which runs through the 11th, featuring over 60 of our local businesses. This year, you can get a digital passport that allows you to get points and win prizes and coupons as you dine out at your favorite eateries. One lucky winner will take home the ultimate foodie gift basket valued at over $300. It's filled with gift cards and items from participating restaurants. Check out the Beaumont Convention and Visitors Bureau website for further details and download the free digital passport starting today. Don't forget to snag your tickets for our Beaumont Annual State of the City Event. It's coming up Thursday, November 21st, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Beaumont Civic Center. It's going to be a big citywide pep rally filled with music, food, fun, as we take a look back at the things we've accomplished together as a city over the past year and the big plans in store for the year ahead. Check out the Beaumont Chamber of Commerce website to get registered. You don't want to miss this event. We want to congratulate Shaquena Nobles for her promotion to Emergency Management Coordinator for our Emergency Operations Center. Shaquena was serving as deputy coordinator prior to her promotion, and we know she'll continue to do a great job in this new position. And finally, a reminder, city offices will be closed on Monday, November 11th in honor of Veterans Day. And we have a special tribute we'd like to show you featuring some of our own city employees who have served in the armed services, including Beaumont City Councilman Chris Durio and Thank you all for your service, and that concludes our announcements.
Next, we have recognition from the city of Beaumont Service Awards presented by Mr. Kenneth Williams, Beaumont City Man.
Good afternoon. I'd like to once again acknowledge our veterans. That was pretty awesome today, the ship, with them being here and also the presentation. So thanks, Trace, for that presentation. It's a tough act to follow, but we're following it with something that's really good for us here at the city, and that's honoring our, uh, presenting our service awards today. You know, I always say one of the best things that we do is honor our employees, and this is, certainly gives me great pleasure in doing this today. So we're going to honor them. Mayor's going to join me. We're going to get photographs, and if there are any department heads here, would you join the mayor, myself, with the person, come up for a photograph? First, we'd like to honor Sergeant Leland King Jr. from Criminal Investigations, and he's been with us for 25 years. It looks like Leland is not with us. DeWanna Guillory from WIC for 25 years. We're very fortunate to have all these long-term employees. Next is Ms. Barbara Beard of Technology Services and Literacy, 25 years. My gentleman, I had the opportunity to meet the first time this week, Officer Jerry Jackson, Michael, Michael Hawkins Sr., Fire Suppression, Sea Shift, 35 years. And last, but certainly not least, okay, well, we're way from last. Next is, let me find, oh, Captain George Schultz, patrol, 35 years. Apologize, Captain. And last, but certainly not least, Joe Flores, Traffic Management, 40 years.
Thank all of our employees. Uh, Mayor, Mayor, would it be okay if all the wardies came up and council take a picture with?
Great idea.
Thank you. Wardies come up?
Everybody, if you want to scoot around in front of the council, that'd be great. Keep on going. Yeah, we might need a couple rows. Everybody scoot a little bit more so I can fit everybody in. You might have to maybe. Go ahead. Let me see if I can get you. Everybody look here.
The service, uh, service award recipients, please meet in the first room conference floor for cake and punch. And with that, we're going to take a five-minute recess. So five minutes, that'll be 2:04. And, uh, I'd like to acknowledge that we have a quorum, uh...
Councilman Felschall, can I get you to take your seat, please? Thank you.
Minus Councilman Getz.
Councilman Felschall, can I ask you to take your seat, please? Thank you. Mayor, I get you to make that announcement again now that we have...
All right, folks, we have a quorum, uh, minus Councilman Getz at this time, and we're going to proceed. And we're going to have a City of Beaumont 2025, 2026 Legislative Update from Miles Haynes, Assistant to the City Manager of Special Projects.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be doing the legislative agenda presentation. You'll see that the date, the year is 2025, 2026, because most of the, um, advocating for this agenda starts in January and goes into 2026. In front of you, you should have a document. Looks like this, and it's pretty much a breakdown. The purpose of the presentation is to get your feedback. And so, based on the end of this presentation, we'll be able to bring this document back to you next week for your approval of the, uh, official legislative agenda. Typically, this agenda is taken to Golden Triangle Day at the Capitol. Some of you guys go to, um, Washington DC, and you can take this agenda. So this is, uh, your legislative agenda that hopefully you approve, uh, in the near future. So let's start with the presentation. All right, uh, the successes from last session, at the state level, we were able to pass House Bill 5012, and that, obviously, you've heard a lot about that, but that gives us some creative options with the hotel project, um, in the near future. We also had some key takeaways from, uh, last session. We were able to kind of sit down with, um, some of our state legislative consultants and our federal, uh, legislative consultants, and they were just able to tell us that we probably need to increase our meetings with legislators. If we do anything local, uh, to bring them in. And so, we, we didn't approach them when we were just at the Capitol or in DC. We would start to integrate them in our process throughout the year. And that, we took that advice, and I think you guys have done that. Uh, Mayor and Council, I've seen pictures of you visiting some of our congressmen, our senators, and things like that. And at the, here at the local level, the city manager has met a lot with, uh, different offices, whether that be Dave Phelan, Christian Manuel office, I think Senator, um, Cruz has come in as well. So we've increased our meetings throughout the year in an effort to learn how to work together before we need, um, these representatives. And another thing we were able to find out is that we need to narrow our legislative agenda. It was too broad last year. A lot of the representatives came in and wanted a little bit more clarity, and so, uh, that's the goal of this presentation, uh, moving forward. Next slide. So these are the focus groups that we worked with throughout this whole process. Uh, like I said, state and federal, we have legislative consultants. Uh, I've went through the gauntlet and met with our department directors, and so they were able to provide feedback. So a lot of this information is from department directors and what limitations they may face, uh, from a legislative standpoint, and how we as a city, uh, could put this in an agenda so that we can, you know, grow and improve our community. Uh, so also met with the executive management team, and to go through this document as well. The city manager's been able to see and add some feedback. Uh, Office of Dave Phelan has been a part of this process. Office of Christian Manuel has been a part of this process. Um, Officer Brian Babbin and Randy Weber have also been a part of this process. And now we're bringing it to you guys. So this is kind of the last step in our process, and hopefully we get your feedback and, and move forward with, uh, with the completed document. Next slide. So on the left, you'll see the previous year, there was, those were our priorities. Um, and on the right, you'll see these are new priorities. A lot of the priorities on the left, uh, are included on the right. What we've realized is that we had a real broad agenda, and it's not that we don't, we don't prioritize those things on the left, it's just they're not needed in the legislative agenda. So we still can advocate for those things or have conversations about topics that are on the left. It's just the right provides us a more concise, um, document, um, and it enables us to stay on somebody's desk longer. So we don't want it to go in the trash, or it gets lost in the shuffle. Uh, next slide. So these are, um, what used to be called congressional earmarks. They're called Community Project Funding, uh, and the top two are from Congressman Brian Babbin. Uh, they have made it to the House of Appropriations, so they're more likely to be funded. Uh, the fiscal year 25 budget hasn't, uh, been approved yet, so it, it is not concrete, but the top two items are more likely to be a fund, to be funded. The bottom item is from Congressman Ri- uh, Randy Weber, and, uh, that was for the rerouting section of utilities downtown at the, at the AT&amp;T site. The House Appropriations Committee didn't accept that one. It was about 4.7 million. So we're still trying to figure out, uh, what we maybe could do, uh, moving forward, because it's not to say that it can't be included in the future, um, in, in next year's, uh, possible budget, but that 4.7 million didn't make it to the House of Appropriation Committee, so. And that's for the utilities at the AT&amp;T site. Um, so it did try, so we'll move to the next one. Okay, so that, that list, that short list of five items includes, uh, community development, and we talked about, um, public safety, public health and social services, resiliency, fiscal and financial strength. And so, as you see in bolded, those are the topics, or they would be considered subtopics. Some of these items could have been a main priority last year, and so I, I wanted to highlight those as, I won't read through every particular item, but in front of you, you'll have that document. So in community development, uh, these are, these are some of the priorities that we will be, um, advocating for it, different opportunities, whether that's with the public at the state, federal, national level. So that's economic development incentives, uh, downtown economic development, parks funding and hot tax, affordable housing resources, hot tax and for arts and tourism, education and workforce development, trails and sidewalk expansion, parks and wildlife funding. And what I noticed last year when we went to, uh, the Capitol is, you know, if you take a legislative agenda with you and you, you're not really, you know, read on these topics, sometimes information can be lost. So included in this legislative agenda or with this legisla- legislative agenda, we'll have a resource guide. And so each of those points will have a little bit of detailed explanation, uh, to be a little bit of some historical context, and there's some resources that you can read in your spare time, or anybody can read in their spare time to learn why we wanted to include this, or what's the purpose behind these particular, uh, items that are in the legislative agenda. So that'll help us moving forward. So some of this information is going to be, uh, it takes a while to understand, and so we'll have a resource guide to go along with this. I can stop at each category and see if you have any feedback before I move to the next section, because they have so many different points. Do y'all have any feedback on this particular area? Does it fit the criteria of something that you feel comfortable being in the legislative agenda for the City of Beaumont? I'll move to the next one. Uh, this is public safety. Uh, in this category, we have community policing and de-escalation training, uh, fire EMS and police services funding, public service and safety center at Lamar Institute of Technology, police strategy autonomy, juvenile curfew authority, and rail crossing management. So some of these, like I said, these come from department directors. I think, uh, some of you guys have had meetings with different elected officials, and this, there were also priorities from them as well. Uh, do y'all have any feedback or comments on this particular section? Okay. All right, the next one is public health and social services. Um, I've been educated and, go ahead. Last page, uh, public safety.
Supported city priorities?
Yes, sir.
The rail crossing management. Uh, that, is that concerning, like, quiet zones and things like that?
Yeah, and what we try to do is we put language together that allows us to have a much broader conversation. When y'all have a meeting, you can go into detail on different things that are more impactful or details, but this is in alignment with that conversation that's been brought up lately around rail crossing the noise and some of, I think, we were at a meeting here recently, and Councilman Getz brought up to, uh, Congressman Babbin if we can have some type of grace on, um, that period of time where you put in those, updating those codes and what's required from them. So this is the language that is hoping to encompass that statement. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Miles.
All right. All right, we'll move to the next one. Uh, the, the, the public health and social services previously was public health. Obviously, we've dealt with a lot of different topics that encompassing this, so we just put these two topics together, and that includes unhoused support and health services, funding, community health protection, mental health, workforce support, community mental health collaboration, crisis intervention, specialists and police departments, Jefferson County juvenile resources. And if that fits, you know, language that you guys feel comfortable with moving forward, uh, I'll move to the next section. Next. Resiliency, um, we have a, a few things in here, disaster relief funding, FEMA threshold adjustment, flood control funding, infrastructure funding, electric grid stability, IT modernization, cybersecurity and disaster recovery funding, water and wastewater infrastructure, and the Sabine Nature's waterway deepening. And these, like you said, we've, we've worked with department directors and tried to work with our community partners to find things that are priorities that, that do impact the City of Beaumont in different ways. So if this section meets your satisfaction, I'll move to the next one. If you have any feedback.
Proceed, yeah.
All right, and, uh, this is the last section, uh, fiscal and financial strength. This is focused on transparency and tax policy, PEG funding for local governments to expand that, uh, tax-based protection, municipal ordinance authority, windstorm insurance, cost equity, position to unfunded mandates, rights-of-way control, and municipal bonds, being that we may go for municipal bonds in the future, uh, protecting that to have a tax exempt status moving forward. Any questions or feedback on that?
Councilman Turner?
Uh, great presentation, Miles. I had a question about, on the first page, the community development.
Okay.
Something, myself and Councilman Maturio, we met with state representation last year about earmark funding for a potential RAC center over there in the, um, South Fork area, Ellis Keep area. I think, you know, the feedback was good. They said the funding was very strong. This is one of the biggest financial years they ever had for low to moderate income areas to opportunities to reduce crime. And I know with our median income in Beaumont, been around 28,000, and that South Fork area being pretty high up there when it comes to crime, just given that neighborhood something positive to do. That was a project that they said they were, well, some of our state representations said they would be interested in seeing if they could assist us with. So, yeah, I just think, Chris, I don't know how you feel, but if we can kind of get that on there and keep it fresh on their mind, I'd be gracious with it.
Councilman Maturio, then Councilman Felschall.
Well, I was just saying, I agree with, uh, with, uh, Councilman Turner was talking about as far as that, uh, community center in the south part of Beaumont, you know, everything that he said.
Y'all talking about it's more of a sports complex, RAC center, so I have clarity?
Something like this, the same thing at the Sterling Pruitt Center, but...
Smaller scale, yeah.
Councilman Felschall?
Yes, Mr. Haynes. I, referring back to number three, Public Health and Social Services, Jefferson County Juvenile Resources. Um, while back, I went through the, uh, Rogers Juvenile Detention Center, and the facilities are... Need attention. Can you speak to that a little bit more, as far as what possibilities are there, and, uh, getting involved and, and monies being released to upgrade those facilities and make it more suitable for, you know, detention of teenagers?
Yeah, and I know they're doing a diversion center over there by the Dream Center site, so part of that will be used, but the county takes the lead on, um, anything juvenile because they have the facility. So our goal is to include language that supports our partners. So we as a city, unless you guys made a decision to do something of a different angle, Jefferson County mostly manages that, but we just, we try to include language that, that impacts our city. So we want to include language that does support Jefferson County, uh, especially in the juvenile category, because that's a big, big topic in the City of Beaumont.
Well, and I, and I understood that it's, it's county-driven. I get that. And they dictate their, the, uh, finances and resources that are released. I was just curious if, whatever, what, is there, is there any leverage on our part to encourage that?
Yeah, in my mind, this would be that leverage to use this agenda as we go to the state, you know, Golden Triangle Day at the Capitol, or anywhere we go to advocate, you'll have a document... go to Shrek at the Capitol or anywhere we go to advocate, you'll have a document that says we do support the county and the proven juvenile uh resources. So that, that would be our starting point. I don't have an answer to their process, but we can, I can get that information.
Thank you.
Follow up and get that information.
And I, I was a part of a meeting with the Speaker Phelan, and this is a priority for him, juvenile uh detention system in Texas, so.
You know, they specifically spoke to the facilities itself and.
It's, it's additional funding because it would be given to the counties to, you know, because they manage it. So it would just be funding to individual counties, increasing that. Is my understanding. Anything else?
Yeah, uh the last.
And this question isn't directly basically towards Miles, but just for staff, is anyone familiar with any form of legislation or something dealing with, you know, our companies and employers and working inside the city of Beaumont, but basically living outside of the city of Beaumont? I don't know if that's a possible conversation, but it did come up in TML where a lot of cities are having issues where revenue is leaving outside and all the jobs are being supplied within. I don't know if that can be a, a talking point or maybe some ways they can educate us on ways we can deal with that or recapture or make it more attractive. But that was a big topic at a recent TML workshop where a lot of cities were experiencing their major employers, employing citizens with that was inside their city limits, which was some of their top paying jobs. But the citizens were working outside and it was at alarming rates. And it was pretty consistent in cities throughout Texas. So if it's something we can do or work with or work on, I think that'd be to our advantage to kind of look at what options are out there.
Well, looking to see if we can find some of that information or look at the TML site and see if they have something and and maybe some of those cities who donate to work with it. And we can um take a look at it and s- and see if there's something we can use or bring it back and report on it.
Go to the last slide, Tina. So also included in this um legislative agenda, you'll have a, there'll be a page in the back where people want to write notes. We, that's been standard, we just made it on one page. And then there's a QR code I have, it's already embedded in our document that you'll um you'll see in the future, but it allows people to get feedback. So if they're anywhere and they're looking at a legislative agenda, they could take a picture of that QR code. It sends them to a form and they can give us some real time feedback. And also with each point that I brought up today, you know, I'll have a document similar to this and it'll be essentially a resource guide. So as we go to the Capitol, you know, before we get there, we're a little bit more informed on each of these topics and some uh information surrounding it. Other than I don't have any uh, we're, I don't have any more information, you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, you did a goo- great job, Mr. Haynes. Now that we're through our presentations, uh at the close of the meeting today, City Council will reassess into executive session to consider matters related to contemplating or pending litigation in accordance with section five five one dot oh seven one of the government code, the claim of Deborah Mann. Consider matters related to the deliber- deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property in accordance with section five five one dot oh seven two of the government code, to wit specifically being a portion of the right of way along Lucas Drive and the property line of six two two West Lucas Drive being uh point oh three acres, more or less. Consider matters related to uh deliberate uh to deliberate the employment evaluation duties of public officers or employees in accordance with section five five one dot oh seven four of the government code, to wit specifically, uh Judge Craig Lively, Chief Magistrate, Tina Broussard, City Clerk, Sheree Reed, City Attorney, and Kenneth R. Williams, City Manager. Now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comment on the consent agenda or regular agenda items, one through four and eight, on any other topic or on any other topic. Items five through seven have already been heard in public hearing. Therefore, citizens cannot speak on these items. The City Clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, your city and state. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up. Please be reminded that the myself or council cannot respond to whatever comments you're making. Someone from the office will contact you. It has to be an agenda item for us to discuss.
Amanda Yarborough?
Good afternoon, Councilmembers, Administration, Mayor. Thank y'all so much for your time. I bet y'all know what I'm about to talk about. The Beaumont Children's Museum has been a vital part of the Southeast Texas community, from a museum without walls to a facility that now nurtures curiosity and imagination. Over the past several years, BCM has found our footing. We've established ourselves as a educational cornerstone, welcoming over sixty thousand visitors plus annually averaging around six thousand or more a month. This incredible growth, nearly three hundred percent increase in operational capacity over the eight past eight years, demonstrates the community's support and desire for interactive educational experiences in our community. In our dedicated efforts to expand and enhance our offerings, we have been actively exploring possibilities that will allow us to serve more families in school, schools. Recently, we have had discussions with downtown property owners regarding our potential relocation, which has prompted prompted an old idea to resurface. This idea to approach the city to think about repurposing the downtown library building into a dynamic Beaumont Children's Museum and Children's Library collaboration. In the early twenty teens, the city approached the museum about this very idea, but the timing was not right. Circumstances now show that this collaboration could not only support the revitalization of downtown, the downtown area, but also bring breathe new life into both the museum and the library's educational missions. After many tries, BCM did gather valuable insights into the current operations of the Beaumont libraries. The findings reveal that despite significant investment in the downtown library from the city, it is experiencing lower vi- visitor engagement, serving fewer visitors with less than two thousand books checked out each month. In contrast, the popular RC Library attracts over nine thousand visitors a month, checking out nearly twelve thousand books in its busy summer months, all while doing this with a lower annual budget and focusing on children and their community initiatives. This indicates a critical opportunity. By transforming the downtown library into a collaborative space for a children's museum and children's library, we can create a successful, thriving environment tailored to the needs of families, schools and our ongoing young community. Overall, this vision not only meets the needs of our community, but also supports the broader goal of downtown engagement and revitalization. We propose to the city and administration to start the discussion of the current use of the downtown library facility as a location for the Beaumont Children's Museum in collaboration with a children's library.
Thank you.
Taylor, and I think that's Blunt? Close enough, okay.
Good afternoon, Councilmen, Mayor West and City Administrators. My name is Taylor Blunt and I have worked at the Beaumont Children's Museum for almost six years and I'm currently the Events and Marketing Coordinator. BCM has been lucky enough to call downtown Beaumont home for almost ten years and we truly believe being downtown is beneficial to us and that we are beneficial to downtown. We have had over sixty three thousand visitors so far in twenty twenty four and nearly eight thousand of those were over the course of two weekends in October for Museum Madness and Touch the Truck Weekend. We also know from staff interactions with guests that we have families that are traveling from out of town to come to events and even some from out of state, especially for Touch the Truck and Museum Madness, because those are the most popular. And we know that the number of families who visit BCM are undoubtedly beneficial to the other museums and to all the local businesses downtown as well. We also truly enjoy being able to participate in city events and other organizations' events downtown. Uh we do Free Days or just over the museum in general for Viva Beaumont, the city's Juneteenth celebration, Oktoberfest, the Gift of Life, uh and the city and Amset's tree lightings and a lot more. Uh we want to continue to have a positive impact on downtown Beaumont and having the space to expand our museum and all of our programs and events will help us do just that. So we would like to ask the City Council to initiate the research process into the downtown library facility's use as it currently functions and as a possible home for a children's museum and children's library facility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Brown?
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name's Elizabeth Brown. I am the Operations Coordinator at the Beaumont Children's Museum. I ask you to explore a potential new home for the museum within the downtown library building, a space that could transform how we serve the community and meet the growing needs of families. Over the past few years, we have been able to connect with over sixty thousand visitors annually. Our programs, which are curated towards children from infancy through eighth grade, have become essential for many families. Despite the challenges we faced, we've built an engaged community that relies on our services for fun, educational and hands-on experiences. However, we cannot keep up with the ever-growing demand in our current facility. We have waiting lists for birthday parties and group visits. On our busiest days, we have a line out the door due to capacity restraints. And the limitations of our current space make it difficult to host programs, events at the level that we envision. We want to continue to provide more for Beaumont and the greater Southeast Texas region. The downtown library building could offer the additional capacity that we desperately need. Our proposed layout would strategically use the building's various floors, exhibits on the upper level, a children's library and welcome desk in the middle and offices, classrooms and storage downstairs. This setup would allow us to expand our exhibits and educational programs while also dedicating space for a children's library, providing a facility where children can move seamlessly between a museum exhibit and storage time. This would not only serve as a great convenience for families, but also foster a love of reading and learning in a dynamic and creative setting. The downtown library location also aligns well with Beaumont's broader goals of revitalizing the downtown area. As a part of the museum district, our presence there would continue to add to the appeal of downtown and attract families, both local and visiting. The museum has already established itself as a family-centered resource and moving to this building would enable us to further contribute to the city's goals of increased downtown foot traffic and economic activity. We're asking for the opportunity to work with the city to explore this idea, allowing us to assess the cost, potential benefits and ways to honor the library while introducing a new vibrant use of the space. We understand the importance of the library's role in the community and envision a place where we can integrate our services to benefit everyone on a grander scale. We hope for the opportunity to engage in a deeper discussion on how we can bring this vision to life in a way that meets our community's needs and creates lasting value. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seth Wells?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council and Staff. Uh six eight nine zero Glenwell Drive. Moving a children's museum into the downtown, I'm Seth Wells. I'm also the president of the Board of the Children's Museum, excuse me. Uh moving a children's museum into the downtown library building may seem unconventional, but it's actually an opportunity to reimagine and revitalize both the building and the community it serves. The move could breathe new life into a space that's struggling while simultaneously expanding access to enriching educational experiences for children and families. It's about turning a challenge into a chance for growth, connection and renewal. Children's museums are designed to engage young minds through interactive learning, play and creativity. The idea of integrating the children's museum into this space takes it to the next level. By relocating the museum, we create a synergy that maximizes the space. This creates a multifaceted learning environment. Imagine a space where children can explore hands-on exhibits in the museum, then immediately find books and resources that expand on what they've learned from the children's library. From a practical perspective, moving the children's museum into the library facility space will be a smart use of limited funds while maintaining a vital tourism and community resource in the downtown area. Our trusted community partners agree, remaining in the downtown area is what is best for the museum and the community it serves. Revitalizing an underused building with a children's museum means we're not just throwing money at a new expensive location, we're making the most of a space that already exists. The infrastructure is there, walls, floors, inclusive, accessible features and design that can make immediate impact on our, on our mission. What's missing is the energy, the vibrancy and the focus on kids and families that a children's museum brings. By shifting the focus of the space, we can not only boost the museum's impact, but also give the facility a much-needed boost by making it more relevant and engaging to the families it was designed to serve. In conclusion, moving a children's museum into this facility is not just a solution to a problem, it's an opportunity to revitalize and reimagine the space, creating a more vibrant, accessible and inclusive community resource. It's a chance to turn a challenge into a triumph, enhancing both the facility's relevance and the children's museum's reach, all while fostering a sense of connection and shared learning for families in our community. I urge the council to start a conversation to discuss this critical opportunity of moving the Beaumont Children's Museum into the downtown library facility in collaboration with the children's library. It's about making public spaces work harder for everyone, especially our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Zach Stiles?
Good afternoon, Zach Stiles, fourteen seventy Thomas, uh Mayor, Council, City Manager. Thank you all for allowing me to speak today. Uh I am here on behalf of the children's library and I do serve on the board of the library. I'm not going to be nearly as well spoken as uh my uh associates here. They've uh prepared and put things together much better than I ever would or could imagine to. I'm here uh as a father of four, uh all under the age of nine, who adore the children's museum in its current space. I know mu- many of you have grandchildren and children who use the children's uh museum and I would urge you to go over there on a Saturday and just take a look at what's going on over there. Furthermore, I'd urge you to go to the library downtown and see how it's being used with your own eyes. Take a look and see. You know, I firmly believe uh in our kids, in our community, and I'm really excited about downtown growth and the opportunity there. We've looked at other facilities, uh Terrell Park has been kind of presented as a potential option for us. After visiting with many of the, the folks that support our museum, not museum, it will be, uh it is the children's museum and the children's library, it will be children's museum, children's library. That's just not going to be a viable option uh based on the cost associated with getting out to Terrell Park, uh bus route, signage, all that type of thing uh having to change. We want to be a part of the downtown development. We want to be part of the growth that's going to be happening downtown and we want our kids to be a part of that and to be able to see that. So really, same ask uh as my associates here, you know, just asking for the lines of communication to be open. We don't even know if it's feasible right now, to be honest with you. We have requested through public records um some things about the current, current library. We have not received anything. Uh we did receive a response back that basically said there's nothing to share. We would just urge that you all to get involved and help us uh kind of research this and be able to see if this is a viable option. If it's not a viable option, then we'll move down the road and we'll look for something different. But we really do want to see the growth in the museum. We want to see the growth in the library. We want to use an existing facility that uh is being underutilized, in my humble opinion. And we want to see a children's library uh focus. My kids love going to RC Library too. How cool would it be for them to go to the museum and then check out a book and then head home? So just, I would like to keep the lines of communication open. I believe in teamwork makes the dream work. I think we're not trying to necessarily push anybody out. We would like to see what we can do together collaboratively with the library and grow into the children's museum and library space. So thank y'all so much for your time.
Thank you.
Charlie Crepp?
Good afternoon, Mayor West, Council, Mr. Williams and staff. It's uh nice to come back and visit with the council once again. I don't know where I've been, but I've been absent. I want to uh speak to the veterans and thank them for their service because looking back at history, you don't realize what it meant for the nation, for these people that, that actually. for these people that, that actually sacrificed their lives for the, for the freedom of the country. We, but anyway, want to thank the, all the veterans in their service. Looking at the, the fire department, I know the, the city is in negotiation with the fire department, and I would like the, I've been a user of the fire department through the years. I would like the, the firemen to, to help the city to come up with ways to reduce costs. And I know it's a expense, very expensive for the city to run the fire department, and we, we need it for protection of all our citizens. And hearing about the city, of the people on the, speaking to the child's museum and library, they need to think about the safety of the children and, and joining up with a, a public library. That's a, that's a, in this day and time, we've got to think about that seriously, about joining up that type of thing with, with a public library, with people coming in and off the street and what have you. And I want to just thank all the, the employees of the city that, that have served so many years of dedicated service. And I enjoy our city and all the facilities that are, are present. And I think we need to approach the state to help us with our streets because we pay a lot of gas tax, and we need to get that money back from the state. And I don't know how much we get back, but it just sure needs to be approached if we don't. And my time is running out, and thanks for listening, and I hope to be back soon. Bye-bye.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank everyone for their comments. I'm now looking for approval of our consent agenda. Is there a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. I did. I took gavel practices. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one, please?
Yes, Mayor. Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to MK Constructors of Vada for the concrete payment repair citywide Phase Three project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
Sir, a second for approval? There is a motion and a second for approval of item number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may I have the reading of item number two, please?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an advanced funding agreement with Tech Start for the maintenance of new signs and pavement markings at the Mylum Street Railroad Crossing, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
There is a motion. Is there a second for them?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval of item number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept maintenance and authorize found payment to C-Tex Construction Corporation for the foresight drainage improvements project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number three?
So, move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four, please?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of one primary recirculation pump replacement at the wastewater treatment plant, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the res- resolution.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve the resolution.
Is there a second for approval?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Councilman Turner. I'm just curious. City Manager, it, it says that two of the three pumps are down, and that actually requires at least two pumps to be working. And so, I'm just curious, what, what does that leave us with only one pump?
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Mike to address that question.
So, we normally keep two pumps in service. The reason being for redundancy. Having, we just operate one pump at a time, and the purpose of these pumps, we have the media filter that's with the trickling filters. This media has to stay wet. If it dries out, of course, it damages the bacteria. So, having a recirc pump in place, we're able to, during dry conditions like this, recirc the wastewater back through to keep the media wet. Like I said, we try to keep two in operation, not at the same time, but have them so we have one for redundancy.
Okay, because it says two working pumps are a must for the plant to function efficiently.
If we, you know, we're down to one pump, if we lose that pump.
Okay. I, I just, it sounded like you had to have two
Yes, sir.
of the three working, but it says two of them are down. I thought, well, okay, where are we at with one pump? So, I understand. It's just the verbiage here.
Create one at a time.
Okay, but it, it sounded like you had to have two working at the same time in order for the plant to operate efficiently, but that's not true. Okay, thank you, Mike.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five?
Council consider a request for a specific use permit to allow duplex in a residential single-family dwelling district for property located at thirty-three seventy-five Avenue C. And it was approved five oh at a planning commission meeting with the following conditions. Construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow, black flow pre-treatment and asphalt program. Two, construction plans shall comply with all applicable fire and building code requirements. And three, a four-foot-wide sidewalk shall be installed along the front property line of Budin Avenue C in a manner approved by the city public works department.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve with conditions.
Is there a second for approval?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number five. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number six?
Council consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a second dwelling unit in a residential single-family dwelling district for property located at eighty-five ninety Humble Road. And this comes with the recommendation of denial of the ordinance.
Is there a motion for item number six?
Move to approve the denial of the ordinance.
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second for denial of item number six. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving, denying item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number seven, please?
Council consider a request for a rezoning from a residential multiple-family highest-density district to a general commercial multiple-family dwelling district or more restrictive district for property located just south of thirty-two fifty South Eleventh Street, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
Is there a motion for item number seven?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Councilman Turner had the second, I guess, for approval of item number seven. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor. Council to conduct a public hearing to receive comments regarding the city's emergency management program and plan. And we have a presentation from our emergency management coordinator, Mr. Quina Nobles.
And congratulations on your new promotion.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, good afternoon, council. This is going to serve as a public hearing for our emergency management program. Go to the next slide, Tina. So, we bring a public hearing every year as required by government code four eighteen. It requires portions of the, the non-sensitive portions of the plan to be a part of a public hearing, and so, we're meeting that requirement of the law today with that. Our emergency management plan was adopted by City Ordinance one point oh three back in April of two thousand and eight, and it fully addresses the emergency management responsibilities. We have city, city policy support as well in the grant administration policy, the evacuation and disaster policy, and our plan and policy support the National Incident Management System, which is responsible for the NEMs training that we do with our employees. Next slide. Next slide. Oh, sorry. The emergency management plan is the basic plan, and it consists of twenty-two functional support annexes that support those plans. And those are for everyone's reading pleasure. On the website, they're posted on the emergency management plan listed at Beaumont Plans there, okay? Emergency management plays a vital role in keeping our city prepared and coordinated to respond to both major events and disasters or emergencies as they occur. We operate the program and the plan according to the five missionaries found in the National Preparedness Goal, which include protection, prevention, response, recovery, and mitigation. NEM personnel-specific contact information is available on the website, and we take calls from citizens every day regarding the plan and even assist in some of the cities and the businesses as well, the citizens and businesses as well as establishing their own plans. Currently, our emergency management office is involved in the ongoing recovery efforts for the more recent disasters. These are the open ones that we have, which include Hurricane Harvey. In two thousand and twenty-four, we had the severe weather incident that received a federal declaration, Hurricane Barrel, that happened in June of this year. And then we have several minor hazmat incidents that happened that we respond to, and we, and we go on. Some of the major events that we participate in or we plan for with, in conjunction with the major event planning team include the biggest ones that we have is Gift of Life and Mardi Gras, but we do approximately fifty-two of these events a year where we bring a planning team together. We address each of the departments that may have responsibilities or roles in their planning effort, and we try to put together a coordinated response plan for those events so that they can happen safely throughout the city. We participate in several exercises throughout the year that test both the plans as well as regional plans that we participate in. Every year, we do the stand mass notification exercise where we get people to register for their cellphone, register their cell phone to receive local alerts there as well. And we do response drills with industry and business partners every year as well, and we have one coming up in April of two thousand and twenty-five, and that will serve as our full-scale drill for that year. We do several different trainings. As I mentioned earlier, we make sure that all of our city employees meet the training requirements and specifications according to NEMs, and they are aware of the emergency management program and plan. This training includes training that speaks to explosive, radiological, incident command, emergency management training of those different sort to both city and non-city personnel. So, if we have volunteers or something that needs training, we offer that training for them as well. And then after incidents that we have, major events, we do an after-action review where we go in and we look at everything that happened within the incident, and we identify ways that we can make better or improve on things that worked well. So, for the two thousand and twenty-five focus, we're going to continue to review and update the annex as we do every year. However, we met regionally with our partners, and for two thousand and twenty-five, we're going to be focusing on mass care, cybersecurity, which is really, right now, a really hot topic across the emergency management community, continuity of operations, and critical infrastructure, just to make sure that we're prepared for some of those in, those incidents should they occur. We'll also be continuing to communicate, participate in community-wide planning teams. We do a lot of outreach with the community where we have tours that come to the EOC. We actually go out to different organizations and provide them with emergency management overview of the program and the plan as well. And then, as always, we encourage our citizens to register, to receive those alerts from us directly. We also participate in several state legislative advisory committees as they relate to emergency management to, to speak to the governor, the governor, just so that we have a voice there as well. Last year, you guys approved, in March of two thousand and twenty-three, you approved the regional mitigation, hazard mitigation plan, and that one will not be due for another major revision until two thousand and twenty-eight. However, we have already begun the annual update to the project list based on priorities from recent disasters and making sure that the projects in the hazard mitigation plan align with the city's strategic plan and the community improvement plan. The emergency management does receive some of the supplemental fund, funding. We get those from the state homeland security and law enforcement's assistance programs. We have a lot of disaster recovery funding. It comes through some of the reimbursement from the disasters that we incur. These are some of the ones that are, we have funding going on with right now. We have, we get four oh six mitigation funding and four twenty-eight for any of the alternative projects that we have as well. We also use funding that we can get to supply training and exercise support. We do a lot of trainer-trainer exercises so that we can do in-house training locally there. We partner with FEMA, the Texas Division of Emergency Management, the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, as well as the Jefferson County Local Emergency Management Commission or Committee as well, and Sabina Chief's Association to bring localized training into our responders and, like, citizens and volunteers, as I said earlier. We meet with the plant managers forum as well because they provide the regional match funding for our notification system. So, we do extend their relationship with them as well. We get support from the local, the law enforcement's support office program. We do our emergency, emergency notifications come through Set Repsy as well, and then we receive donations from organizations like HEB and some of the other programs as well. This is the time where I encourage all of our citizens to get their notifications and awareness, and you can get all of the incident-related information. We post it on the city website. We post on our emergency management Facebook page. On that site, you can find access to free FEMA training that you can do at your own pace, at your own time, that will help citizens also become more prepared. Next slide. You can, we also have the outreach programs that I mentioned earlier, and these are just some of the some of the things that we do, and we encourage any citizens that want to come and know more about emergency management, get involved in the emergency management program in the ways that they can. They can reach out to us via the website. We do these community awareness programs. We have emergency plans and templates that's on that site. We have a evacuation checklist and tips. We have go-kid checklist, all kinds of household inventory things that people can bring with them. And at the end of the day, our goal is to make sure that we have a resilient moment. And I did not have a slide on this because when I put this together, we did not have this, but before you guys ask me, we are monitoring tropical storm Rafael that's out in the Gulf. That has been a hot button question there. The issue that's going on with that is once that it crosses Cuba, they have no idea where it's going. They have increasing confidence that it is going to reach unfavorable conditions, and so we're just participating with our partners every day, getting the update on that, and as the situation warrants or needs, we'll send out notifications for that as well. That's all I have.
Very much. Do we have any other, anybody signed up for, in the public hearing? All right. Public hearing is now closed. Mr. City Manager, will you take us into the work session?
Council to review and discuss the application and scoring process for low-income tax-credit housing development. We have Ms. Jess Prince here to present.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. This will be short and sweet, but the purpose today is to consider establishing evaluation criteria to guide our approach regarding requests from developers of projects that are seeking housing tax credits from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. These criteria will support the broad goals of our city's housing division to do the following: create and maintain affordable housing in Beaumont, promote greater fair housing choice, and overcome patterns of segregation and concentrations of poverty through incentives and requirements. As all of you are familiar, we typically receive requests from developers in December each year to support projects that they would like to do in our area. They're typically applying for competitive housing credits through the TDHCA, and currently, we don't have any sort of metrics that we are using to score those projects or to incentivize these developers to deliver products that would specifically help our community. And so we've put together a scoring criteria suggestion for your review and consideration today. The city of Beaumont has an excess of multifamily development for low-to-moderate income households, and going forward, in the past, council has expressed an interest in supporting affordable housing needs by promoting cottage-style or townhome development design with the applicants that are proposing projects. So our design priorities are really wanting to implement a scoring system that aligns with our community development priorities. This would be proximity to grocery, walkability, cottage or detached single-family, access to parks and public transit. I believe in your packets, you have the scoring metrics. We do have one development currently that models some of these, and that is the Old Dallin cottages. Those are over on Old Dallin Road near Walmart. So, an application could potentially score points for the following attributes: the detached design, location and connectivity, and inclusion of market rate units. Cash-in lieu of park improvements or green space may be required, but again, council can always opt not to support the project at all. We do typically require them to have their applications to us in December, and that is based on TDHCA's deadlines and when it needs to go to council and, you know, that schedule. So this should be what you had in your packet. We have a scoring system for proximity of amenities. As you can see, they are listed on the left, and then the points are awarded based on the proximity to that amenity. So the first column being a quarter mile or less in distance, the three points anywhere from a quarter mile to a half mile, and then the one point if it is half a mile or more away from that amenity. Also, I'd like to mention for clarity that high-frequency transit service is defined as transit service arriving every 15 minutes on average from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. seven days a week, and full-scale grocery is defined as a store of sufficient size and volume to provide the needs of the surrounding neighborhood, including the proposed development, offering a wide variety of fresh, frozen, canned, and prepared foods, including but not limited to a variety of fresh meats, fresh produce, dairy products, baked goods, toiletries, and a wide variety of household goods and paper goods.
Jess, let me ask you to stop there and ask a question. Does our bus service even cycle at a frequency where they could come by at every 15 minutes?
Some do. Yeah, it just depends on the, like, Parkdale is pretty frequent. I know that we've done some realignment here over, I believe it was in 2023, that has increased the frequency, but we do have some that arrive in that frequency. Some are less, and then that way they would be scaled, you know, appropriately on this scoring system.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. So, mixed-income projects is the lower scoring metric on the right. We have seen in studies that it is beneficial for developers to include market rate units within these properties and for them not to just be low-income units. And so, we're proposing that if they do include mixed-use market rate, that we award them additional points with the percentages that are listed there. And I did say this would be brief, so the next step would be to implement the scoring system and then update our website accordingly to align with our December deadline.
Councilman Getz.
Jess, I want to thank you for recognizing council's collective voice in saying that we would like to focus more on detached family housing and townhouses as opposed to increasing low-income apartment complexes in our city. As you pointed out at the very beginning, we have an overabundance of those already, so these incentives are very important, and hopefully developers will take advantage of them. I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Councilman Turner, then Councilman Felschall.
And for me, the emphasis on the parks, the cash-in lieu, I think that's very important that we make parks accessible to neighborhoods and walking distance and actually looking into grocery and quality foods being around that. I think this community is starving for more development like this, and I'm glad you took a focus. And again, as we've been talking about, you kind of implemented the plan, so I'm looking forward to see how it formulates and, you know, what it prospers to.
Thank you.
Councilman Felschall.
Yeah, Ms. Prince, again, thank you for the presentation, and I'm really excited that we're being very intentional and deliberate about approaching this issue because, as Councilman Getz said, we have an overabundance. This may not be a fair question, but do we have the information on how far over are we on this overabundance?
I can't speak to a specific percentage. I am aware that it's more than double, and that is one reason that they have to come to you for approval before they can apply to TDHCA.
Wow.
Chris, do you have a specific stat on that?
Yeah, I agree. We don't necessarily have that ratio for this year, but we can certainly reach out to TDHCA because, as y'all know, when we go through the process, it's, we usually have to, council usually has to acknowledge twice the per capita ratio, but we can ask what that number is for this.
Well, I don't want to burden you with that. You have plenty to do, but I just, I just was curious if we had that ratio, but that's fine. We know it's too much.
Ratio is too much, correct.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Councilman Durio.
Under your formula, where would duplexes fall? Would that, would that be included in this?
Yes. Duplexes are, I believe.
Would that be considered detached or?
I don't know that it would be considered detached. We could certainly be more specific with the points if you didn't want to go full-scale, single-detached. We just, I created it that way because that was indicated as the interest.
Yeah, so what we're asking for is a baseline is detached townhouses, duplexes. We really are asking for, you know, what we're trying to discourage as a baseline is no longer the monolithic larger multifamily complexes as a baseline. And then the idea is, once we had the detached or the townhomes, then it would get into the scoring criteria. We do have to acknowledge that, you know, we may not get anything we want, and then we'll be forced with having to, you know, review it. But again, the idea behind this is to give guidance to those developers to say, look, this is what, at least for the time being, this is what the city of Beaumont is wanting to see, and so please, you know, plan your developments accordingly.
Under our ordinance, Councilman Durio, duplexes are not considered a single-family detached home, so for the criteria purpose, I think we would treat it the same. So it would not. So it would be, like, when, you know, when we do planning commission, duplexes are their own, so that that wouldn't be considered a single-family, but that you could consider them a detached unit, but they wouldn't be considered a single-family.
And there's an example on the slide, which may be on your monitor, I don't know, of what those could look like.
So you or staff, y'all would grade them, and then I guess when they apply for this, staff would grade them and then bring it to us for approval or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. City Manager, would you have the reading of item number eight, please?
Yes, Mayor. Council to consider resolution adopting a scoring system for proposals submitted by developers in relation to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs' annual competition for tax credits, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number eight?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. At this point, we're going to have council member comments, and I will begin with Councilman Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, we had several people get up and talk about the Children's Museum today, and not sure of the proper procedure for you to get feedback from the council, but I'm in favor of you researching this and seeing what this looks like for both parties.
Okay. Councilman Samuel? Okay. Councilman Felschall.
Thank you, Mayor. Just remember that today's election day. You've got local, city, city, county, state, and federal votes to be cast, so it's an important election. Please make sure you vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Turner?
Mr. Manager, I myself am in favor as well as us exploring to see the options of working together with collaboration between the children's museum and the library. I kind of like to see what that could look like, especially the direction we're going in. And also, in item number six, I know we denied the, we denied additional housing to rent out or whatever they were attempting to doing. I could be wrong, but just correct me if I'm wrong, but I've also had a lot of neighbors and people within the community contacting me about just homeowners renting rooms, period, even with the Airbnbs. I know we don't have anything kind of firm on how we have the Airbnb structure, but if we can do something to that magnet to, to see what we can do to deal with those Airbnbs, where we can have some structure to it, as well as owner renting out, you know, almost every room in their house, increasing the traffic, and people just being in these neighborhoods, you know, I don't think, most people don't buy their homes designed to do that. So just if we can look at the things that we can do or ways that we can implement some structure to it, it'd be greatly appreciated. I had a lot of people contact me complaining about those renting rooms.
Thank you. Councilman Getz?
I want to add my voice to urge the administration to look into ways we can collaborate with the Beaumont Children's Museum to work with repurposing the downtown library. I think that's a great idea and would like to see that done. I also have been contacted by citizens that are concerned that single-family homes and residential neighborhoods are advertising on social media to rent out all the rooms in the house to separate individuals, whether that be Airbnb or some other form of lodging. We don't have regulations or ordinances on the book right now to govern that type of conduct, and I think it's something that we probably want to look into. The last thing is, I'd like to get clarity on the cost of removal of the utility lines that cross the north civic center parking lot. I think we saw a presentation today where the total mention was like $4 million. That's considerably more than I thought it was going to cost to move those lines. So if we could give me some clarification on that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Durio?
Yes, Mayor. First, congratulations for recognizing the veterans on American Legion as such today. Also, congrats to all the employees who received their service award. As Mr. Williams said, it's great to have that many long-term employees here with the city of Beaumont. I also support looking into the Children's Museum deal. I support that as well. And the employees that gave our presentations today, good job, very informative, really appreciate it. And also, and I know I've sent emails, there's a lady on Downs Road who's been having a $2,000 water bill with the water, and her water's already cut off, and, and she's not really getting a lot of help when she comes down and speaks to the people over there on the water bill. Yeah, I've sent emails to you, June, I mean, Mr. Ellis, and I think y'all know who I'm talking about. If we could really, I got an email from her today during the meeting. So if we could really look in and see what's going on over there, it's kind of something that's going on. We have a $2,000 water bill on you, and you have your water cut off. It's a, it's a problem. And I heard, I can't believe, I don't remember his name. He'd come up here every, what's his name? He'd come up here every week. Mr. Krab. He mentioned something about gas tax from the state. Y'all know anything about that? Or is that something y'all could look into? I'm not familiar with the gas tax that, dollars we can use for road repair. Matter of fact, state taxes doesn't. You build a state, it's hardly anybody. For infrastructure and things like that. So, but we can look at, check into it to see what he's talking about. And one last thing, thank you. One last thing, fulfill the boot. Citizen, you see those fire trucks out there, and they're walking around with the boot, and they're collecting for MDA, so be generous. It goes to a great cause. Let's see what I have there.
All right. Councilman Neal, you had something else?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, several times now, the council has requested for you to look in the Gardner Road. The grass is getting pretty, looks pretty rough over there in certain areas. If you could take a look at that for us, get that fixed.
Gardner.
G-A-R-D-N-E-R, I believe.
G-A-R-N-E-R.
N-E-R.
Between Helbig and Concar.
Madam, City Attorney?
I wanted to say congratulations to all of our fabulous employees for all their tenured years of service, and to our veterans and active servicemen. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
The $4.7 million estimate on the electric lines was obtained from Entergy. It was, we could refine the estimate, but that was the best rough estimate they could give us without charging us a significant amount of money, but it was from Entergy, so it's as accurate as, as we can be at this stage. And as far as I know, Mr. Manager, the, the gas tax is dedicated to the highway road system, but I will ask Tech Todd about it. Yes, the state highways.
Assistant City Manager Boone?
Yes, Mayor. Just, I know it's not a posted item, but just to point a clear Yes, Mayor, just, um, I know it's not a posted item, but just a point of clarification, um, regarding Airbnbs. We certainly do have them in our city. Uh, we do not currently have what's called a short-term rental or S T R ordinance, which regulates those. Um, we've looked at it in the past, but, uh, we don't have that now. That being said, we do have and have had for quite a long time a zoning ordinance which prohibits, uh, more than three or few, excuse me, more, three, three or more unrelated individuals from living in a single house. So if you go beyond three or more unrelated individuals by blood or marriage, then that can be a violation of the zoning ordinance, so.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager.
Was going to touch on the family, um, part of the ordinance and our zoning ordinance, um, but right now, we don't have anything for short-term rental.
Thank you.
Just want to thank all of our servicemen who've, um, given service to our country because Monday is Veterans Day. Want to thank all of our employees that receive rewards today for twenty-five, thirty-five, and forty years of service. Um, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Did, um, two of Tina's items with the veterans, uh, for sure, and I also like to, uh, recognize our firemen that came today to, for the fill the boot campaign. Congratulate them. Also, um, Veterans Day, you mentioned Veterans Day, but I just reminded that our city facilities, the, uh, non-essential facilities will be closed on Monday for sure. And, um, uh, homelessness, uh, it's, it's a big, it's on the forefront with us right now, just like this city to know that our public health and safety work group is meeting diligently. They had another meeting today, and they're getting ready to go out and start, uh, working, uh, these situations really, really diligently. So, uh, some information will be coming up within the next week. I think it's next week, we'll be going out and task force enforcing these items, so we'll be getting some information to council on that. And Councilmember Neal on the, we, we're looking at doing some different things, such as herbicide, still mowing, because we just, it's almost impossible to keep up on the mowing, uh, in this city. So I'm surprised we hadn't had a larger program to do something more permanent with that. And lastly, um, yesterday, the new audit committee, they had its first meeting, so it was good to get, uh, Councilmember Neal and Turner and Getz in that meeting, and, and I would encourage them to give a report back to council in the future on what they do. I think that's all I have there.
All right, thank you. And, uh, Mr. City Manager, I'd like for us to, the traffic calming that was discussed in terms of, uh, I've had some neighborhoods, a couple of different neighborhoods reach out to me over the past week saying that they're looking at, you know, they would consider the expense on their end, and I, you know, I was thinking if we could look at other jurisdictions to see when that occurs, if they can, you know, match another one in an area of town. Clearly, our budget is, is tighter, and these aren't, uh, the traffic calming can be an expensive proposition, but.
Question, but have we started accepting old applications yet?
We were waiting for the signs to, to arrive. Uh, we, we have ordered them, and as soon as they arrive, then we're going to post that out and, and start taking applications, but we just didn't want to have the acceptance of them and then have a long span while we're waiting on equipment. But we do, as part of that program, have a ability for a neighborhood to pay for it themselves. That was listed.
And I know specifically on this, uh, uh, they had evidently gotten together. Uh, they were asking about speed bumps, which I know they're referred to as humps now, but, uh, if that can, if that can be explored, and I know that's sending a significant increase in costs, but if people are looking to, you know, match it across the city or something.
It is, but that would also be able to be funded by them. Once the process was followed and that it was approved, um, that they could be put in, if they're willing to fund them, then yes, they, they could fund them.
What's the ETA on that?
Uh, I don't know what the ETA on the signs are. They're, they're ordered. As soon as they come in, then we'll post, um, the traffic calming and, uh, public, uh, publicly put it out over social media, et cetera, and start taking applications.
Okay. Thank you. And certainly appreciate the presentation by Beaumont Children's Museum, and they have a lot of support by council, it appears, for more, uh, study on that. Congratulations to all our employees and their, uh, years of service, and it's with a great pleasure that we get to serve as a council of, uh, so many people that have invested so many years of their life serving the city and the, and the residents of this city. And, uh, I also want to congratulate who has left because she's back on duty, uh, I suppose. I don't see her, uh, oh, no, there she is. She's Queen of Nobles, who is our new, uh, well, relatively new, first publicly announced as the emergency management coordinator here for the city of Beaumont, who's served, uh, with the emergency management department for many years now and does an excellent job. And, uh, with the, certainly appreciate the veterans and celebrating that this coming Monday, and make sure for those that have not, get out and vote today. The polls close at seven P M. And with that, we're recessed into executive session.